I will call the January 2, 2024 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. And for those of you who watch or attend Oakwood City Council meetings, you might be wondering why the city manager is calling the meeting to order. And I will explain myself here in a moment. But first, I'd like to invite you all to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In 1960, the city of Oakwood, or I should say, the citizens of Oakwood adopted a charter. And basically, what that means is the citizens of Oakwood wanted to self-rule this community of ours to the extent that the Ohio Constitution would allow. And in the 1960 charter is a provision that requires the city council to conduct what's called an organizational meeting once every two years. And there are two very important things that happen at the organizational meeting. Number one, the new council members are sworn in. And sometimes that means council members are re-elected, but they're again sworn in. Or sometimes it means we have a newly elected council member. And tonight, we have two council members that will be sworn in again, and we have one council member that will join this five-member body for the first time. The second important thing that happens at the organizational meeting is that the five then sworn-in and elected members of Oakwood City Council, they select amongst themselves who will act as the mayor and who will act as the vice mayor. And the fact that I'm doing this task right now means that this gentleman to my left is not the mayor at this very moment. That may change in a moment or two, and if and when it does, I will turn the microphone to the newly elected mayor. The first two gentlemen that we're going to swear in, and our law director, Rob Jacks, will do it, are Bill Duncan and Steve Byington. Bill Duncan is starting his 21st year on city council. He was appointed in May of 2003, just weeks after the untimely death of Jack Donnelly, who was a council member at the time and in fact was the vice mayor. So Bill was appointed, and again, according to our charter, the remaining four members of council had the duty of selecting a resident, a citizen of Oakwood, to fill the vacant seat. And that's how Bill initially came to be a member of council. And then, the charter also requires that at the next general election, an appointed member would have to run for office. And so, Bill Duncan ran successfully in November of 2003, and then was re-elected in 2007, 2011, 2015, 2019, and again, this past November in 2023. And Steve Byington, not far behind, has served on council now in his 17th year, and was elected initially in November of 2007, and then re-elected in 11, 15, 19, and 2023. And these are four-year terms that they will again serve as members of Oakwood City Council. So, at this point, I would ask our law director, Rob Jacks, to swear in Bill and Steve as Oakwood council members.
I solemnly swear, I solemnly swear, I will support, I will support, my duty and my right to protect my citizens, my people, my Ohio citizens. I will obey the law hereof, I will obey the law hereof. I will, I will, all respect, all respect, hold in court, hold in court, please, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me. Thank you.
Now, for our newly elected council member, Healy Jackson. If I have this right, Healy and her husband, Tom, have lived in Oakwood for 36 years. And I know Healy has been very active in various different organizations here in our community, and she successfully ran for council and will be joining the other four members for a four-year term. So I would now ask Rob Jacks to swear in Healy Jackson.
I solemnly swear, I will support, my duty and my right to protect my citizens, my people, my Ohio citizens. I will obey the law hereof. I will, all respect, hold in court, please, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me.
I have two more things, and I'll be done here. Now, I would ask Lori Stasiel, our clerk of council, to call the roll on our five new council members.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Thank you. And now, do I have a motion or a nomination for mayor and vice mayor?
I would like to, with great honor, nominate Bill Duncan for our city mayor and Steve Byington as our vice mayor.
Is there a second?
A second.
Lori, would you call the vote, please?
Mayor Duncan? Mr. Duncan? Mr. Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
So Mayor Duncan remains our mayor, and Vice Mayor Byington remains our vice mayor. So mayor, the gavel's back. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you, all the citizens of Oakwood, for your support for this existing five-member council. We do it with honor and pride, and we have the best hopes for Oakwood, and we want to do what we think is right, and we appreciate all of you coming. I think most of you are coming because of Councilmember Jackson. But congratulations, congratulations to all of you. At this point, I'll ask for a report on the minutes of our December 4 regular session, work session, and executive session, and Councilmember Turbin has that report tonight.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I have read the minutes for this December 4 meeting, including the regular session, the work session, and the executive session. Upon review, I found them to be complete and correct, and therefore, I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those that are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, thank you. The minutes have been approved. The city council has a group of subcommittees, and primarily, our main changes is Councilmember Jackson is going to be replacing Councilmember Hilton on many of our committees. And we had one committee that we had a liaison with, that's a regional committee, it was called the South Suburban Coalition for Drug and Alcohol Abuse. And that group is disbanding at the end of the year, so we no longer will have a representative for that. I do want to thank our state representative, Andrea White, who is here. She and I, way back 10 or 12 years ago, got that thing started, and we've done a good job, so it was time to start over, do something else with that. So, with council's consent, I would move that our council committee assignments be approved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we also will have some citizen appointment committees. We have a lot of volunteer citizen committees in Oakwood. We are starting to look at those vacancies that we have, and we will be coming back to council at our next meeting in February and maybe in March to report on those committee assignments. So, that concludes our status reports section of our meeting. Again, as I previously said, we do have a special representative here, our state rep, Andrea White, and she has a proclamation to deliver to our city. Welcome, Andrea. You can speak into the microphone.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Duncan, Vice Mayor Byington, Councilmember Jackson. It's my congratulations to you for your reelection and your election, and my office and myself are always available to assist in any way we possibly can. And I know I talk with many of your staff members and different representatives, and I'm happy to help in any way possible. Today, I'm excited to be here to recognize the Finance Department and Director Cindy Stafford, who's going to come up for this commendation. So, Oakwood is very fortunate to have such integrity in its finances. And so, you have received this award. The city of Oakwood and your team in the Finance Department has gotten this Auditor of State Award for several years. And it's important because as you get it, you reflect on the integrity of the finances of the city of Oakwood. And the wonderful thing about it is that actually, you help yourself prepare the annual financial statements, which is kind of rare for a finance director in a smaller community. And so, the fact that continually, these statements are recognized at the state level for the highest quality and integrity is really a great statement for the city of Oakwood and for its residents to know that your team and yourself have their backs and their dollars. And we all know how finances are tight, and finances are watched, and taxes, and all of that. So, I wanted to present this to you, to the city of Oakwood, and to you, Director Stafford, for all of the outstanding work you've done. And again, it's a commendation from the Ohio House of Representatives. On behalf of us, we want to just congratulate you on getting this award. So this is the.
Thank you, Representative White. We appreciate that very much. As we've talked in other occasions, a well-run organization has a highly ethical tone at the top, is the quote-unquote. And from all five members of the city council to our city manager, and every one of our department heads, but especially Cindy Stafford, this is not an easy award to obtain, and we've received, I think, around six in a row, maybe more, seven in a row. Thank you for that correction.
Lucky number seven.
She keeps track of the numbers, so seven it is. And again, we appreciate everything you do to help us make decisions on behalf of the city and advise our Budget Review Committee, who also helps us when we go through our annual budgeting process. So again, congratulations to you and your staff. Now, for the reason I think most of you are here, we have our holiday decorating awards, and what we're going to do is, Carol, we're going to have a video or pictures of these? Okay, and so then, after we show the pictures, or as we do it, we're going to show a picture? As we do it. So I'm on my way down with my handheld mic, and we have six separate areas in Oakwood, and we have both a day winner and an evening winner. And then, we also have an award for business in Oakwood, and we have a day winner for business and an evening winner for business. So on my way down, as I call your name, if you're here, come on down, and we will hand you out a picture and an award for you to take home with you. So our first area is Area 1, and it is 260 Ridgewood, and that is Kirsten and Sean Cahill. Are they here? All right. Not seeing them, we will make sure that we get their award. And then, our nighttime winner is 437 Volusia, and that is Julie and Jonathan Lamb. Here we go. Congratulations. It's a picture of their home in the evening with the lights lit, so congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Area 2 is 124 Beverly, and that is Erica and John Williams. Are they here? Here they are. Congratulations. And our evening winner is 601 Hathaway, Bethany and Erin Reef. I see them. Congratulations. Area 3 is 1306 East Shance, the O'Connor family. And they are here as well. Congratulations. And the evening award is 223 Harmon Boulevard, and that is Ally and Timothy Shaw. And Area 4, yes, Area 4 is, the daytime award is 324 Peach Orchard Avenue, Beth and Jeremy Wilson. Are they here? I do not see them. We'll make sure they receive their award. And then, our night award for Area 4 is 360 East Drive, John and Vale McGuire. Are they here? I do not see them. Okay, congratulations to them. We'll make sure they get that as well. Area 5, is that correct? Yes. Area 5 is 111 Park Road, Gracie and Al Wisbrode. There is Al. I say, congratulations.
Congratulations to you. I wish my wife was here to say. And I had her a little bit.
Okay. It was like when my wife got the home beautification award. Ditto. And then, the night award on Area 5 is 25 Grandin Road, the Beecher family. And they're here. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for coming. And then, Area 6, the daytime award is 1101 Ridgeway Road, Brad and Whitney Gibson. Are they here? Do not see them, so we'll ensure that they get their award. And then, our nighttime award is 814 Harmon Avenue, the Jurella family. Are they here? All right. We'll make sure they get their award as well. And then, we have two business awards. Our daytime award is 23 Park Avenue, Lula Bell. And she is here. Congratulations. And then, our final award, business award, for nighttime is 2510 Far Hills Avenue, the Spicy Olive. Are they here? They're out of town. Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for your help and your committee that picked these daytime and nighttime award winners. We appreciate it very much. I was going to tell you, we have an outstanding rest of the meeting, but this is the time where most of you leave. But you're welcome to stay, and again, we appreciate all of your help in decorating your homes this year. Okay, I'll wait a couple minutes here. This is the visitors' section of our meeting, where if anyone wishes to address council, this would be the time that they would come down to the podium if they could state their name and address for the record, and then tell us what you would like the council to hear. We would welcome your comments. Does anyone wish to address council at this time? All right. We will now conclude our visitors' portion and go to legislation. And I have a resolution recognizing Ann Hilton and, it's rather long, but she has a very impressive resume. I now see her. Okay, I wondered if she were here. She's hiding in the back. We'll give you all the time you want, subject to the three-minute rule. Yeah. No, I will let you address council after I do this resolution. Whereas on November 3, 2009, Ann Hilton was elected by the citizens of Oakwood to serve on city council, the governing body of our fine city. Whereas on January 4, 2010, Ann Hilton was sworn into office. Whereas during her 14 years in elected office, Ann Hilton served Oakwood with distinction as she worked to maintain the wonderful attributes of our city and always kept an eye out for ways in which we could improve. Whereas during Ann's 14 years as a member of city council, she served as council's liaison to the Oakwood Sister City Association and Oakwood Municipal Court, and as chair of the Council Committee for Law and Minutes. Whereas during Ann's 14 years of active and consistent involvement on council, the city of Oakwood completed the following significant projects. Approved the Oakwood Athletics and Recreation Master Plan. Constructed and dedicated the Krieger Field Dog Park. Purchased parking lot on Orchard Drive behind the Oakwood Club. Approved opening of the Grace Learning Academy at St. Paul's Church. Signed reciprocal lease with UD for the use of Old River Fields and tennis courts. Installed the Far Hills Business District decorative streetlights. Navigated the financial challenges associated with the elimination of the Ohio Estate Tax. Aided in creation of the Oakwood Farmers Market. Approved construction of the Route Song Retail Center. Approved opening of the Top of the Hill Priest School at Lutheran Church of Our Savior. Completed the Far Hills Business District Street Tree Replacement Project. Partnered with Oakwood City Schools on construction of Lane Stadium. Accepted donation of the Virginia Hollinger Tennis Facility. Settled a property dispute leading to the construction of 84 condominiums at Point Oakwood. Approved multiple amendments to the Point Oakwood Development Master Plan. Approved construction of the Russell Total Wealth and Wellness Office Building at Sugar Camp. Constructed and dedicated Cook Park at Oakwood Avenue and Schenk Avenue. Completed the Schroyer Road Reconstruction Project, including the quote-unquote "road diet." Reconstructed the Schaefer Park Tennis Facility in partnership with the Oakwood City Schools. Constructed the Oakwood Community Center parking lot. Oversaw CenterPoint's multi-year project to rebuild the natural gas distribution infrastructure. Established the Oakwood Citizen Police Academy. Established the Assisting and Contributing to Oakwood Resident Needs Acorn Program. Implemented the online registration system at the OCC. Constructed the recycling and yard waste drop-off facility. Converted an Orchard Lee Park tennis court into two pickleball courts. Improved the Krieger Field Dog Park parking lot. Completed major improvements at Gardner Pool, including replacement of the concrete deck. Completed a comprehensive study of the traffic signal system. Analyzed and considered building a roundabout at the Five Points intersection. And whereas during her entire 14 years of service, Ann consistently based her public policy decisions on what was best for the community, yet always heavily considered the impact of those decisions on individual Oakwood citizens, businesses, and on Oakwood neighborhoods. Whereas Ann distinguished herself through her consistent willingness to hear from any and all citizens for as long as necessary in order to provide everyone the opportunity to express their feelings and opinions on issues. Whereas during her service on Oakwood Council, Ann was always a staunch supporter of projects and programs that improved the environment and living conditions for all citizens in Oakwood and in the Miami Valley. Whereas Ann always made decisions that recognized the reality and necessity of change, yet stressed the importance of retaining the charm and storied history of our unique community. Whereas during her public service career, Ann was a responsible guardian of the public checkbook and participated in the operation and adoption of 14 annual city budgets, and consistently attended regular meetings with the Citizens Budget Review Committee. And whereas through her entire public service career, Ann respected the city manager form of government prescribed by Oakwood City Charter and was a stalwart advocate for empowering and supporting city staff. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Oakwood, Montgomery County, Ohio, that one, the council of the city of Oakwood affords special public recognition to Ann Hilton for her 14 years of exemplary service as a member of the Oakwood City Council. Two, fellow members of council, members of city staff, and all Oakwood residents will miss the special way in which Ann Hilton made every citizen feel they were an important part of the community. And three, through this resolution, the city council hereby declares and expresses sincere gratitude and appreciation of the citizens, public officials, and employees of the city of Oakwood for the 14 years of dedicated public service that Ann has rendered to this community. I would like to ask city council for a second to this resolution, and then we'll have a vote.
Second.
Would you call the roll, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Thank you. And this resolution is signed by all five members of council and our city manager, and if you would like to come down to the podium, I will, do we have that here or not? Okay, Lori has it. And Lori, why don't you go ahead and present it to Ann? And then, Ann, this is your opportunity to tell us what you really think about the rest of council. Welcome.
Thank you for that. Really a lot. Wow, I've been up in this area a lot, but not with bell bottoms and a sweatshirt. Each of you has taught me so much, and that's all I can say right now. I respectfully request that I get my other two minutes at another time.
All right. Well, then, you need to come up here because we're a low-budget operation, but I wanted to give you a gift, and I know how you love toboggan ski caps, and I have a toboggan ski cap from the Wright State University Raiders. a toboggan ski cap from the Wright State University Raiders.[600.04][600.04](Laughter). Congratulations. Okay.[603.04][603.04](Applause). What is it that they say in council, I reserve the balance of my time, correct? We will make sure you're welcome here anytime you want, Ann, and I'll give you more than just two minutes. How's that? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I've now lost my agenda. Here we go. So I believe that, yes, we will have, the next item we have is Vice Mayor Byington has an ordinance.
Yes, Your Honor, this is an ordinance imposing an immediate moratorium on the issuance and processing of any permits relating to the retail dispensaries, cultivators, or processors of adult-use marijuana and declaring an emergency. At the November 7th, 2023 election, Ohio voters passed State Issue Two, which effectively legalizes recreational marijuana. The new law took effect on December 7th, but it was adopted as a voter-initiated statute rather than a constitutional amendment. That means it can be amended at any time by the state legislature and a number of changes are currently being debated in both the Ohio House and Senate. The law provides for a newly-created Ohio Division of Cannabis and authorizes that department to come up with rules and licensing requirements for retailers, cultivators, and processors of marijuana. The state has nine months to issue these standards, which do not currently exist. The legalization of marijuana is a major change in the law, particularly when it comes to the potential impact of marijuana business operations on a small residential community. It is important for council to carefully consider appropriate regulations to promote the orderly implementation of the law. This will preserve the public health, safety, and welfare, as well as the community character we value in Oakwood. This moratorium ordinance will preserve the status quo for up to one year, allowing time for the legal landscape surrounding this new law to become more settled. This will give the state time to come up with appropriate rules and standards for the licensing and operation of marijuana businesses, and it will give council time to consider these issues and adopt appropriate regulations here in Oakwood. The moratorium only affects permits for marijuana business operations. It does not have any effect on adult marijuana use and possession, which are now legally, which are now legal as provided by state law. I'm introducing this ordinance as an emergency measure to ensure that it takes effect before the state begins issuing any rules, procedures, or state licenses for retail dispensaries, cultivation, or processing. I move that council adopt this ordinance tonight as an emergency measure for the reasons that I stated in the ordinance.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Under the emergency application of this ordinance, it requires a four-fifths vote of council. So at this point, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
And I believe, if I could find my agenda, you have another ordinance.
I do have another first reading.
First reading.
Yes, this is an ordinance to authorize the disposition of certain real property when no longer needed for municipal purposes. A few years ago, the city acquired a single-family home located at 1313 Far Hills Avenue. It was purchased because we were in the planning stages for the 2023 Far Hills Storm Sewer Reconstruction Project, and a critically important section of failing sewer culvert was located directly beneath that house. The house had to be demolished to facilitate the project, which has been ongoing for the last few months. In planning the project, the replacement pipe was specifically engineered and designed in such a way as to ensure that 1313 Far Hills could be reused for the construction of a new, single-family home. Council believes that it is the appropriate use of this property because it allows the city to partially recoup the public funds invested to purchase and demolish the home, helping to offset the costs associated with this major storm sewer project. Residential use is also desirable when considering the existing use of adjacent properties and the mid-block location of 1313 Far Hills. This ordinance will authorize the city manager to sell the property at fair market value for residential use upon completion of this major storm sewer project. This is a first reading of this ordinance, so I'm not making a motion at this time.
Thank you. We will bring this up again at our February meeting. That concludes our legislation. We have no staff report, but we do, as our custom, like to have an Oakwood Moment, and Councilmember Turbin wants to introduce that.
Thank you, Mayor. We actually have a two-part Oakwood Moment today and both recognize our great Public Works Department headed by Doug Spitler. I don't think Doug's here tonight, is he? Darn, he's gonna have to look at the video. Okay, first trees. You know, we love our trees in Oakwood. We love that lush green canopy in the summer and, of course, the kaleidoscope of colors in the fall. But you know, all good things do come to an end and sadly, those beautiful leaves fall to the ground. We sweep them to the curb and in a few days, they're gone. Well, we can thank our illustrious Public Works Department and refuse foreman Chris Harold for undertaking that monumental task of sweeping up all of our leaves, and it is no small task. On an average, in Oakwood, our public works area picks up 9,500 cubic yards of leaves. Okay, now for a visual here. Picture a cubic yard, you know, three feet, three feet, three feet. You got this cube. Line them up in one and a half football fields. That's how many leaves they pick up in one year. So I think that's pretty amazing. And of course, we can't forget our free mulch program, which comes from the leaves. And this year, we distributed 780 cubic feet of leaf mulch. And so again, kudos to Chris Harold and his team for this amazing and incredible job. So thank you to them. And now, on to part two. The city received a letter recently from a Kettering resident who was passing through Oakwood, and I'd like to read that letter to you. Dear Mr. Spitler, on November 29th, 2023, through either carelessness or lack of awareness on my part, I drove my vehicle into a patch of wet cement on the corner of Clarendon and Far Hills. Workers had just finished smoothing out the cement and there was no barrier and I drove my car into the intersection. My two front wheels immediately sunk into the cement. Fortunately, the work crew was still there. They acted quickly. After reassuring me that this was not the first time for such an incident, they called a front loader to come to the site, attached straps to the rear underside of my car, and gently pulled it out. Next, they got a water hose and sprayed off all the cement from the tires and as much as they could off of the car. And by that time, the Oakwood Police and other public service employees were also on the scene. One of the employees directed me to the city's garage where they could get an underspray wash to remove any cement on the underside of my car. I want you to know how helpful your employees were to my situation, the courtesy and care they took charge of this situation caused by me and helped me to recover my clean car. I thank them for all their willingness to assist me, and by the time I got to the city's garage, they had already re-cemented the damaged area of the wet concrete. My experience that afternoon showed me the concern and professionalism of the Oakwood Public Services Department. They saw a problem, took action to resolve the situation. Everyone was courteous and concerned about getting the car out of cement and then to make sure that the cement would be removed and not cause further damage to the vehicle. I want you to know how much I appreciate their efforts. Their actions speak well of their concern for the public they serve. Is that not an amazing letter? And what an incredible feat on behalf of our Public Works Department. So huge kudos to the Public Works Department and Foreman Dave Shuey, who was on-site at the time for this amazing act of kindness. It really does represent the best of Oakwood and truly defines a welcoming city. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for that moment. That was very nice. It is now time for our city manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few quick things. Councilmember Turbin mentioned the leaf pickup and we generally end that program right before Christmas, or at least that's the published end of it. But typically, every year, there are residual leaves that fall in early January, and so for the next two or three additional weeks, we will be covering the city, picking up the rest of the leaves. So there is a bit of an extended period now where we would ask our citizens to push the leaves out in the street so we can pick them up pretty quickly. Secondly, the Green Oakwood Group is again operating a styrofoam recycling event, and that's planned for this Saturday. I believe it's been in the Oakwood Register a couple times. The number, the hours for it will be posted to our city website, but generally, it's between around 9:00 and 11:00. So if folks come around 10:00 o'clock, they'll be able to dispose of all the styrofoam they have, and it will, in fact, go to a recycler down towards Cincinnati. The third item is the work along Far Hills Avenue. I'm happy to report that it's nearly completed. There are a few stormwater inlets that are still being repaired, but all the curb work that you've seen over the last two to three months has been completed. And I think within weather permitting, in the next week or two, you will no longer see any construction on Far Hills other than in the Dellwood Storm Sewer Area, around Dellwood and Greenmont and then Four Road. Speaking of that sewer, work has progressed well on Deveraux Drive, and in the next few weeks, we'll see it crossing from the west side of Far Hills to the east side of Far Hills, connecting on to the work that was completed over the last couple months. And then there'll be a final phase of work on Four Boulevard between East Shance and Far Hills. That'll be the last bit of work. So hopefully, again, weather permitting, in the next couple months, that project will be completely wrapped up. And then finally, I just want to also compliment the Finance Department. When I look at a year-end here, you know, our fiscal year, as you know, coincides with the calendar year, and so there's an enormous amount of work to be done in the month of December and frankly, the month of January, closing out one year, opening the new year. And while a lot of folks are taking time off and enjoying the holidays, the Oakwood Finance Department was here pretty much every day working and will do the same here in the next couple, three weeks here in January. So thank you, Cindy, for all you do and the excellent work you do. That's all I have.
Any questions for our city manager? All right, we will then go to council comments. And Councilmember Jackson, do you have any council comments?
Just that I'm happy to be here and look forward to working with you.
And we're happy to have you here and ditto. Councilmember Turbin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, first, I want to welcome Healy. We're neighbors and friends and now council members, so we look forward to working with you. I hope all of you had a wonderful holiday. As I look forward to 2024, my hope is for peace. And while there is so much conflict and unrest in the world today, you know, it often, those problems seem insurmountable. And even though we may not be able to change the world, I think we can make a difference here in our community, just by being kind to our neighbors. You know, a little bit of kindness goes a long way. And so create a positive change and hopefully, we can lead the way towards a better world. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. First, congratulations to Cindy and her staff, and please, on behalf of council, please tell your staff that we really appreciate all you do. Make sure you let them know that. I'm gonna check on them tomorrow and ask if you get that message, okay? So make sure you do that, because we do appreciate that you have a very good staff. We understand that your group really works hard and we do appreciate all that hard work. And finally, I'd like to officially congratulate and welcome Healy Jackson. We look forward to working with you and I'm glad you decided to run and I hope you've enjoyed it as much as I have, and I hope you continue to enjoy it because, you know, there are some ups and downs of this job, but it's many more positives than there are negatives. So welcome and we look forward to working with you. Yeah.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes, I'd also like to welcome Healy. I've had the pleasure of serving on the planning commission with Healy for I don't even know how many years now, and I just know her thoroughness, her care and love of the city of Oakwood, so I have absolutely no doubt that she'll make a fantastic council member. I'd like to congratulate Bill Duncan also on being re-elected mayor. It's been my honor to serve with you for, what, the last 16, whatever it is, 14 years that we've been in these roles. I think that both of us take this job very seriously and we're very honored to do it. I wanted to also congratulate all the Holiday Decoration Award winners. Just seeing all those photos and the beautiful ways that folks decorated their homes, I'm just very thankful for people who've found wonderful, creative, festive, and I'll say legal ways to celebrate the season. So I just enjoy seeing those and I just really think that that has a lot to do with why people find Oakwood such a special community. And then I will also mention a community just a little to our south, the city of Kettering, lost two council members this last cycle. Yeah, two friends of the city of Oakwood, two friends of mine, Tony Kleepaz, finished off his 16 years with the city of Kettering, and Bruce Duke finished off 37 years with the city of Kettering. Both of those men, you cannot ask for better leadership roles. When I first came into this position, I made sure that I went to a lot of the surrounding communities and introduced myself to their leadership, and those two gentlemen just really welcomed me with open arms and have been good-sounding boards for me over the years. So I know that both of them will do great things in the future, just not specifically on council anymore. So with that, I think that's the end of my comments.
All right, thank you. Again, I would also like to thank the members of city council for re-electing Steve and I as vice mayor and mayor, and I again look forward to working with all of you as we go through 2024. I had four public safety officers I wanted to do a special shout-out to. We're part of a group of South suburb communities called the Tactical Crime Suppression Unit, and one and two of our members were awarded at their annual banquet last month, actually, I guess it was in November, Public Safety Officer Ross Green and Public Safety Officer Josh Wells. They were formally recognized for their involvement in the March 31st apprehension of a suspect for fraudulent postal theft. These were the people that, you know, had access to, they stole postal keys and were breaking into, you know, public post offices or public postal boxes to steal things, and those folks made that arrest that led to those people, I think they're currently being prosecuted. I don't know if it's been adjudicated yet. And then secondly, Lieutenant Justin Sloan graduated from the Police Executive Leadership College. It's a three-month leadership development program, and it consists of 105 class hours covering 20-plus leadership topics, 20 required readings, four research papers, three team projects, two speeches, and one capstone presentation. Captain Przynski and Captain Tanner attended the graduation ceremony, which was held in Columbus. Now, all four of our safety department lieutenants are graduates of the Public Police Executive Leadership College. So congratulations to Lieutenant Stone for that. And then finally, Public Safety Officer Dustin Mitchell, he graduated here in early, last month, from the Sinclair Criminal Justice Training Academy. He started at the academy on June 12th. His class had 17 graduates and consisted of over 750 training hours. Through the course of the academy, the cadets were frequently tested academically. In total, there were 1,100 possible testing points to be earned. Dustin graduated in the academy number two overall, with the separation between first and second being less than three points. This speaks to the level of Dustin's commitment and effort that he put in during the academy. He will take the state police certification test soon, and once complete, will begin his in-house training. Prior to coming to Oakwood, Dustin was a firefighter paramedic with the Xenia Fire Department. So Chief Hill, Captain Przynski, and Captain Tanner attended his graduation ceremony. So congratulations to all four of those. So congratulations to all four of those fine public safety officers that we also have here in Oakwood. Our next formal council meeting will be on February 5th. That's coming up, four weeks. So with that, thank you all for staying until the bitter end and we are adjourned.